Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Planning Board meeting for April 5th, 2022. My name is Carrie Marneck. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I just need to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June 16th, 2021, and act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube, via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not always ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Now, I'd like to confirm the members anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Millie Milton?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Amy Prozsky?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bob Federico?
Here.
Okay, I think that's it for staff. Okay, just round rules in terms of running the meeting tonight. For our presenters and applicants, listen on the agenda. The Chair will invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to the application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others, do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Please note that part of your number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raised Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair lists a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. So with that, why don't we get started with the agenda this evening? First on the agenda, we have the reappointment of Tom Spataro to the Finance Planning Committee. So, Tom, I see you are here with us. Welcome. Oh, Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, Lori emailed us that she can't get in. I just want to let Jim know.
Yep, I received the message. I'm working with her now.
Okay, great. So, Tom, welcome. I know for Board members, Tom took the time to send over a little bit about his history in the position and sort of a little bit more about him. But, Tom, I'd like you to give you the opportunity, if you wanted to note anything specific about, I think the last time we met here, it obviously was, it's been about three years. So, anything that you wanted to speak to or talk to, you're welcome to do so.
Thanks, Carrie. Well, I guess just a couple of things for people that don't know me or haven't read the little excerpt that I sent to Diane Whackel. Tom Spataro, I've been with, in Northborough for about 18 years. And I've been on the Planning Board, the Financial Planning Committee, for about six years. And, you know, prior to that, I did a lot of work, you know, with the youth basketball, baseball. You know, my kids were in sports and always volunteer there. So, you know, from there, started to get involved a little bit more with the town when we started to redo the basketball courts. And I led that project with the CPC funds. And, you know, redid a lot of the courts on all the elementary schools and then worked with the Recreation Committee to redo the courts down at Ellsworth McPhee. So, trying to be very active. Last few years, I've been President of Boosters. It's been quite a challenge the last couple of years with COVID. Part of Boosters is to get everybody excited, and it's hard to do that when you can't get together. But, you know, we've done a, we spent a lot of time with them. We've resurrected the product, the project for the turf field and sports complex, something that the school administration is very excited to bring to the town this year. So, I've been active there. And on the Financial Planning Committee, you know, just working with, with the committee and the town administration just to, you know, prioritize some of the projects. You know, and I think, you know, for the most part, you know, the town's in great shape. We've got a great debt rating, things like that. So, at the end of the day, I think, you know, we're doing pretty well, so.
Great. Board members, any questions from you? I can't see everyone at the same time, so I just want to be sure. Okay, I don't see any questions here. I guess for me, you know, Tom, we're going through this master plan process, and we get so excited about all the things that we can do. And then, I wonder in terms of how it's planned for and how we interface together, how do we prioritize what we want to spend money on? Or what is that, I guess maybe, how does that work where the Planning Board maybe has, how we could give input to you or how that could look maybe?
You know, so, we get presented from the town and a number of the committees, you know, where the money is going to get spent, you know, whether it's, you know, as part of the budget, part of the capital spending, whether we can buy things through the cash-free program or just recently some of the ARPA funds that have come in. You know, I think I've seen the, some of the master plans on those lists, so I know it's part of there. And I think, you know, like with any town, it comes to prioritization, right? And, you know, sometimes there's a number of people that want certain things. But if the town really needs to, you know, whether it's fix equipment, get a new, you know, fire engine because it's extremely old, there's a lot of things like that. That usually has to come first, right? Because anybody here in Northborough knows when we get these big snowstorms, they clear our sidewalks and our streets pretty quick, and it's really nice. And part of that is just because, you know, I think the town just has a very regiment, you know, replacement program for all their equipment. So, they don't have as much, you know, breaking down or things like that. So, you know, I think when it comes to some of the things that you want, Carrie, or the Planning Board wants, I think, you know, what I can do on my side is if you give me information, and I'm willing to come to your meetings, give me the information, let me know, you know, some of the things that I should bring up that could sway, you know, to say, you know what? This is a lot more important than we thought. And there's some key pieces to what you guys want that might have not have gotten through on earlier presentations or what have you. That's some of the things that I can do for you.
And then, one other question I had was, and just thinking about, the Planning Board has a budget of sorts, and I never really have insight, and maybe that's just a matter of working with you, Lori, into how we spend it and what we could spend it on. So, for example, where one of our bylaws includes perhaps a moratorium, and if it passes, we have the potential of creating a committee. And would we want to contract for a certain number of hours from CMRPC? Or if we didn't have free hours, would we need hours? Is there flexibility in the Planning Board budget? Or is that something that's already mapped out in advance?
So typically, you're going to get your budget every year. But then, there's other funds, cash-free and other things that, you know, if there's something important that you need, that's what those funds are there for, you know? And typically, there's, you know, a million and a half, $2 million that is ready to be spent. And again, for the next year or so, there's also the ARPA funds that are kind of filling in those gaps. And with COVID and all the things that we went through for COVID, you know, one of the things is we're catching up on a lot of the capital projects that, you know, we couldn't fund, right? Instead of laying off teachers and laying off, you know, town employees, we were able to cut back quite a bit on other things, including buying dumpsters and anything else that we need. So, equipment got a lot older in the last two years. Now, with the ARPA funds, some of the cash-free, I think there's about $4 point, almost $3 million that is going to be used to catch up on a lot of these projects and get some of the things that, some of the projects like the, what do you call it, the park downtown with the kids, sorry, I forgot. And then, you get the pickleball courts and you got all different things that, you know, hoping to get people out of the house and back onto the streets and, you know, making our town look good. But, as far as like just prioritizing, you know, whether it's going through me, whether it's going through the town administrator, just being vocal to say, these are important to us, and this is why.
Okay, that's great to know. Any other questions?
And Tom, hi, it's Michelle. Hi, Tom.
Hi, Michelle.
And so, on the flip side, you had questions that were more related to spending, spending. On the other side, I think it would be more important to, somewhere along the line, bring some education to the Planning Board about growth and, you know, increasing revenue and how at times, certain zoning can have loss of revenue. And so, rather than focusing on spending, I think the Board, and you could help the Board or educate the Board on how revenue is very important to the town and how sometimes you can have a cause and effect when, of course, your zoning is restrictive or at certain points where it limits your growth, your potential for growth.
So, that's really interesting.
So, like Carrie talked a lot about spending, I think what you could also, over the next three years, bring in ways to help with growth and income back to the town.
And an example of that actually is, so for, as part of this moratorium I just mentioned, one of the line items that that committee would try to solve is financial impact. And to what Michelle's saying, it'd be good to understand, like, if we were to not have a certain use in the industrial zone, what's the financial impact of that? Or, contrastly, what is it compared to what it costs the town to allow that use versus the revenue? And what's the cost benefit there? So, that is really an interesting point that maybe we don't have that insight to. It's just an example of how that would look.
Yeah, you know, and I would say that the, you know, the town administration is probably a lot closer to that. I will say, you know, being part of the Financial Planning Committee, when we did Northborough Crossing, when we do things like that, obviously, you know, we had land there. We brought in the businesses, and that helps considerably, right? So, all of a sudden, you see Northborough Crossing coming, our spike in revenue goes up. Down there, whether it's Bartlett Street, some of the companies that have come in there, you know, again, whenever we fill some of those spots with new companies, we get an increase. The one thing that I would say that I've heard is more, you know, those opportunities that we have, this big landmass like Northborough Crossing are not as much. The land might not be as, you know, there might be water on it, there's other things. But, you know, there's still some parts of Northborough that we can build on. And those are actively looked at by the town administration and targeted to whether it's a business or what have you. Obviously, if you move a business in there, they're there for a long time, you know, whether it's five or 10 years. And then, trying to keep that business in there. When you look at, you know, Marlboro and Fidelity and how they were here for 10 years, and then they ended up leaving, you know, that's a big void right there. So, you know, trying to make it attractive for, you know, businesses to come in to Northborough and stay, I think is quite a challenge because you have other towns, and you have other towns that are trying to do the same thing, and you have companies that are always looking at the bottom line, right? But I will say, one, the town is always targeting new places to try to see if they can bring in, you know, more tax revenue. And then, the next thing is, you know, what we currently have, you know, is there opportunities to replace it, right? So, you know, whether you've got to have a gas station, and that gas station is being sold, can you put something else there that actually, another business that actually generates more revenue than a gas station, right? It's things like that, that, you know, once you kind of get saturated, you need to start thinking about, since the land is getting less and less.
That's a great point. Okay, any other questions? Amy?
I was just curious. That's all great information. Do they actually have, I'm sorry to say, I haven't watched many financial planning meetings, but do they have discussions like that during the financial planning? Like, about a parcel that's going away and what we can put there? Because it's great, as a planning board, we're always saying, okay, what can we add to the industrial district or the commercial district that could bring in more revenue? But, we're not seeing the administrative part or the economic development part where people are talking about it and saying, well, this might work better than that. So, we don't, no one really reaches out to us. Does that, I'm sorry if that's confusing, but...
No, 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 no. I mean, you know, I guess it comes down, if that subject is on the financial planning agenda, I will tell you that, you know, you know, John Cudera will talk about it in so much detail because he really understands a lot of, not only what's in front of him, but he really has a good sense of the, all the granularity behind, you know, all the subjects, you know? I think that's one of the things that I am impressed about, this town, that's why I live here, right? But, is the fact that these guys do pay attention to detail, right? What I would suggest that if you're looking for certain things, you can actually just email me. I'll give you my new email address, so get rid of my old one because everybody in the world knows it. But I'll give you my email address. You guys can contact me and just say, you know, hey, here are some of the subjects that we're, that we want some more information on. And then, as we go through, I can ask John to present the detail. If it is online, then you can see, then I can make sure I ask the question so he can dive into that subject a little bit more.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Millie or Anthony?
Not for me. I'm good.
Yeah, I think those were great questions and certainly gave us a lot more insight to how helpful it would be to have some of the information from financial planning. Absolutely. Thank you.
And if you guys have any questions even throughout the year, just email me. I can email, I'll email you back. If I don't have the answer, I'll go find the answer. Because I think one of the things that you see today is there can be misinformation because people are just, especially with the web, you just see different things, right? And I think one of our goals, being on the Financial Planning Committee, is to make that information that we get consistent and that we can tell other people, you know? So, when these projects start happening, why are we doing this? And why are we spending so much money on some of these projects, right? That's one thing that drives me crazy, but when you get into law, the rules, the prevailing wage and everything else you guys have probably heard before, things get expensive. So, but it's good for taxpayers in the town to understand, you know, this is the way it is and the rules that we have to go by. But, any information that you guys want, you can just reach out to me anytime.
Great, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, if no further comment, Tom, is there anything else you wanted to comment on or?
No, the only thing I'll say, I think before COVID, you know, we had talked about, you know, me attending some of the meetings, and COVID happened, and here we are two years later. So, if there's any meetings you want me to come, things, information you want me to get, just, you can always email me or give me a show.
That's great. Yeah, COVID definitely changed the path for a lot of things, but we're still here, so. If there are no other comments or questions, is there a motion to reappoint Tom Spataro to the Finance Planning, Financial Planning Committee?
And make a motion to reappoint Tom Spataro to the Financial Planning Committee?
Second.
All in favor? Amy?
Hi.
Millie?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
And Carrie's an "i." Okay, great. So, we're together again and glad to have you. Thanks so much. This was super helpful.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, have a good day.
You too. Bye.
Okay, next we have the guest presentation and discussion for multi-family zoning requirements for MBTA communities with Jane Wierich. Is that how you say it, Jane? I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly.
It's Wierich.
Okay, not even close. And also, one other guest, which I did not catch the name.
Nina Westplatt.
Nina Westplatt. Okay, so, welcome. Oh, I see you're able to share your screen, so that's good. So, if you want to start any presentation, go right ahead.
All righty. So, thank you for having me this evening. I'm sorry, I went a little bit too fast there. So, we're here to talk to you tonight about Section 3A of the Zoning Act and how different communities can commend a compliance of it. Feel free to jump in anytime you have any questions. And I may be deferring to Lori at some point for questions as well. And so, to give a little bit of the background on this, Massachusetts has approximately a shortage of approximately 200,000 housing units. The state last year approved an act to, the Act Enabling Partnerships for Growth, signed by the governor in January of last year. That's intended to try to present a range of housing provisions for lowering that threshold for town meeting vote. And then, also, Section 18 of the Economic Development Bill includes Section 3A, which encourages designated MBTA communities to adopt zoning, zoning districts for multifamily zoning that would be permitted by rights. And there's some other provisions in the statute. Overall, there are 175 municipalities that are subject to the law, including commuter rail or MBTA's communities as well as those that are adjacent. Northborough is an adjacent community. So, what's involved with allowing multifamily as a right, there are a few different criteria. One of them is with providing an area that's of reasonable size that would provide a density of at least 15 units per acre. And so, the district must contain at least 50 acres of land. Overlay districts are okay. But one part of the district must contain at least 25 contiguous acres and no part contain less than five contiguous acres of land. Site plan review can be required, but it cannot impose conditions that would make a project infeasible or impractical to build. So, this gives you a little bit of an idea of what 15 units per acre looks like with existing developments in the state. It could include townhouses, carriage houses, loss above commercial use, as well as duplexes. So, in determining what reasonable size is, as an MBTA-adjacent community, it would be required that 10% of the housing stock be multifamily units. As of 2020, Northborough had 5,897 units. So, 10% would be 589 of the units would have to be multifamily units. In looking at the ratio of 50 acres at 15 units per acre, they would be a base of 750 multifamily units. The existing Avalon Apartments in Northborough would count for part of that, both in units and in density. I would have to defer to Lori about how many units that is and how much that would reduce the need to zone additional area.
So, just to stop you there for a second, Jane, do you have that, do you know that offhand, Lori? What that equates to net of Avalon?
So, the Avalon development equates to 11 units per acre. So, there's, I believe it's 382 dwelling units within that development. So, it could be included within the district. But the important thing to consider is that there has to be developable land within the district. So, that could be a portion. There is, one thing that I noticed when I was driving on Route 20 is there is a gravel pit that has approximately 50 acres that's in pretty close proximity to the Avalon development. It doesn't look like it's contiguous, so that's a bit of an issue. But, that is, has another potential location. There is also the ball fields, the semi-pro ball fields, which I understand the property owner is looking to redevelop. So, that is another potential location right across the street from the Avalon development that could be utilized for this multifamily zoning.
Okay, so, just numbers-wise, though, if you're to net out Avalon instead of 750, what, the new number is like 350 or?
Yeah, exactly. So, what you would do, so, like I said, that's 11 units per acre, and you need to have, within your overall district, you need to have 15 units per acre. So, it's okay, within your overlay district, to have various sub-districts of different densities. So, you don't need to have like a 50-acre piece with everything being 15 units per acre. You could say have a 60-acre piece with some areas having, you know, 20 units per acre and other areas having, say, 11 units per acre. So, that's okay. So, it does allow for some flexibility.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
I just had a quick question. And I'm just making up numbers here, but say Avalon is 50 acres. If the overlay is on like 45 acres of it, would that bring it up to 15 units per acre? Like, if you made the footprint smaller, maybe you could...
That's an interesting observation. So, I think probably you could do that. Like, with the Avalon development, there is land that is undeveloped. I don't think it can be developed because when I was looking at it, it looked like there were some pretty significant slopes. And they probably laid it out the way they did for a reason because the land can't be developed further. But that, so you could include a portion of the Avalon property and then a portion of, say, you know, the ball field area or you could choose a location in Northborough Center. That's one of the, and I'm sure as Jane gets further on in the presentation, that'll be clear. When you don't have a commuter rail station or an MBTA station or a bus station within a half a mile, then they are encouraging the multifamily development to be either on a, in a underutilized space. So, for example, if you had a mill building that was underutilized, you could redevelop that. You can include that within your district. Or you could include a downtown area. So, what they want to do with this zoning is create walkable neighborhoods, which of course is also one of the objectives, I understand, for your downtown area. So, we want to have a walkable downtown. And so, that would meld very well together. Maybe not for the entire 50 acres because you can do an overlay district that includes different areas of the town. So, you could say, okay, well, we're going to choose this 25-acre piece in downtown Milbury where we're going to do a greater density. And then, we're going to choose, did I say Milbury? I'm sorry. It's an occupational hazard, being in the same town for 16 years, downtown Northborough. And then, another location like the Avalon development of the 11 units per acre. So, when you average those out, you get to the 15 units per acre.
Are there any other questions?
I just had a quick question on the, I think it's on the, I don't know if the, it's before that, on the confronting the housing crisis. Did you guys, did you go over that part yet?
That was the first, or I think the second slide.
It was the second slide. When it talks about low and middle-income housing, this isn't specifically geared towards that, though, is it?
So, this is a statewide issue that the governor has identified in the governor's team. So, what they've said is that the state has a shortage of housing. And in particular, the state has a shortage of housing that's affordable. So, it's not necessarily just low-income housing. It's also for middle-income folks as well, and that's a statewide problem, not necessarily unique to Northborough.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. That's it.
Thank you. So, when communities are considering areas and the developable land... So when communities are considering areas and the developable land, you've got to think of other things such as how much of the land is developable. Laurie mentioned that, talking about steep slopes on one of the sites, what the height limitations are, lot coverage requirements, setbacks, parking space or any open space requirements that might impact whether you can get to that density. Regarding the location of the districts, being an MBTA-adjacent community, it is not as restrictive. MBTA communities would need to be within a half mile of a transit station, but adjacent communities just need to have reasonable access to a station based on the existing street patterns, pedestrian connections, bicycle lanes, could even be shuttle access to a station. And determining the suitability for families with children, one thing that cannot happen is there cannot be age restrictions on these multifamily zoned areas. You cannot have restrictions either on the size of the units, the number of the bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms or the number of the occupants. And this would be helpful in providing units that are available for families with children. One thing that the draft guidelines do not do is require that the town actually produce or construct these units. It's a matter of zoning, making sure that the zoning is in place for potential units to be built.
Wait, can you just go back for a second, the 40B comment?
Yes.
So if we don't do this, then similar, are you saying that similar to Chapter 40B? If we don't do this, then developers bypass local zoning? Or are you just saying this is a matter, as a side note, chapter 40B has this?
I believe this is more as a side note.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Chapter 40B, so this is not Chapter 40B. So what that means?
I just didn't know if that was, if what she was saying is, because it said related to, I just didn't know if it was making a similar result, but it sounds like not.
No, no.
So what are the consequences if, so what are the consequences if this requirement is not met? There will be different deadlines for meeting either interim compliance or full compliance. And what it means is that communities will not be eligible to apply for certain state programs such as MassWorks Infrastructure Program, Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund. And DHCD may take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards. So there's several timelines. Last week, March 31st, was the deadline to submit public comments on the draft guidelines. The next deadline is May 2nd. Laurie will be submitting a community information form attesting that this briefing has been held with the Select Board and the Planning Board. So right now, the guidelines, as I mentioned, are draft. DHCD is reviewing all of the comments that came in and they will be formulating the final guidelines, which we hope will be available around June or July. Interim compliance will need to be made by December 31st of this year. Once the final guidelines are available, there will be an application form ready for communities to submit to show that what their interim compliance is. Let's see. Next July 2023, if a community does not have existing property that is zoned for multi-units that meet the requirements of the legislation, they'll need to develop an action plan for how they plan to come into compliance. And so that will, the action plan will need to be done by July of next year. And then you'll need to plan to have the new zoning ready to bring to town meeting before December 31st, 2024. I know some communities are working on housing production plans and are hoping to be able to work this requirement into their housing production plan. And then the final deadline is March 31st, 2025, and that is the deadline to apply for the determination of compliance by DHCD. There are several resources available, such as the Housing Toolbox. Mass Housing Partnership is a great resource. I don't know if any of you have worked with Katie Lacy, but she is really great to work with, is always willing to help. CMRPC has allocated some of our district local technical assistance funding so that we can help the community. So we are available if you need help with trying to meet this compliance. There's also additional funding that you might want to seek in trying to meet this requirement, maybe in developing bylaws, either through the EEA Planning Assistance Grant Program or the Community One Spot for Growth. The deadline for the expression of interest has passed, but you still have until early June to apply for the Community One Spot for Growth. So that's a possibility. And that's the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. If I don't have an immediate answer, I'd be more than happy to look it up and get the information back to Laurie.
Any questions from board members?
I was just going to add something. One other thing I learned, I went to the class on this and they are coming up with a tool this spring where, at least in the class I was in, they said it's part of the GIS map, it sounded like, where you can take and surround an area, like say Avalon. You can draw a circle around it and it will tell you how many units per acre. So you can go through your town and pick different areas and it will try to help you figure out how many units per acre and they're developing it this spring to try to help the towns.
I do remember hearing about that. That's a great thing to bring up. Thank you. And our GIS mapping person at CMRPC is also working on creating maps for each of our MBTA or MBTA-adjacent communities to show which parcels are undeveloped. So we can provide that to the communities when it's ready.
Yeah, I think the important thing to remember with this project is even, say, in the downtown area, there already are a significant number of multifamily units that already exist. And so the town can get credit for those units. So this isn't, you know, taking a 50-acre parcel that's undeveloped and saying, okay, this is where our district is going to be. It can be that, but you can also get credit for, for example, the Avalon. That's a significant number of units. It's a very large density in that area. So you can get credit for what's already been done. So it isn't quite as scary when you think of that. The 750 units isn't necessarily something that has to be created in the near future. It could be 750 units for the life of the town. You know, for the next 100 years, the town of Northborough will create 750 multifamily units. So there's no timeline, there's no mandate. It just says that you just have to put in your use chart 15 units per acre in an area, a particular district, whether it's an overlay district or another type of district. So I don't think it's as scary as like I had initially thought when I found out about this.
So, I have a question. So regarding Avalon, so we can take that 382 units and apply that within the 750 requirement. Is that, do I have that understanding correct?
So like I said, there can be sub-districts within the overall district. So that is a 42-acre parcel. There are two parcels that actually make up the Avalon of 11 units per acre. So then you could take another area, let's say a 20-acre parcel, and you could allow even greater density than 15 units per acre to make up for the fact that the Avalon development is only 11 units per acre. So instead of, I'm sorry. So instead of it being 15 units per acre, maybe in this area, it would have to be 19 units per acre.
And then the next thing I heard is you said this is a long-term goal. It doesn't have to be done overnight where there's, the 750 still applies. So is, did I hear that correctly? Meaning, yeah, ultimately, are you still going to have to go up and beyond Avalon? Or is that, can we just, are we shaving that? Or could we shave the 382 off 750 forever?
So all we have.
Oh, you're immune.
All we have to do is we have to demonstrate that we can get that density. So essentially, we have to go through a build-out analysis exercise. So we take, let's pretend this 20-acre parcel. So we take this 20-acre parcel and we say, okay, the height requirements are going to be this. This part, this area has no wetlands, so we don't have to worry about wetlands. It's, you know, gentle farmland or whatever the case may be. So we are confident, we have water, we have sewer. So we are confident that we can achieve this 19 units per acre on this 20-acre parcel of land. We can already demonstrate that we can accommodate 382 units within the Avalon development because that already exists. So it's not a question. You know, we just submit the, the development and they give us credit for that. So, but there is no requirement to ever build it. So maybe in the next 10 years, somebody submits an application. Well, they don't want to do 19 units per acre. Maybe they just want to do a 10-unit development on an acre. There's not going to be a penalty because they are not interested in developing to the maximum potential. There could be somebody who just wants to do a duplex on an acre of land. It just has to allow for it. So it just has to present the possibility of developing 19 units per acre. And whether that ever happens or not is immaterial as far as this program is concerned. If that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
So I have a question on what actually constitutes a housing unit. And I know it may seem pretty straightforward, but I'm just curious as to whether things like the elderly housing on Whitney Place or Coleman House fall into any of these? They're like apartments, but are they counted? How are they counted in our housing stock?
Yes, so say you have the 60-acre area that you designate as your multifamily district. That district can have all sorts of different housing types in it. So it could have single-family homes. It could have duplexes. It could have a five-family. It could have a building with 60 units in it. It could have all different types of housing. What they want is just in the aggregate. So when you take the total number of units within that 60-acre area, the number is pretty much 750 units. Okay, so it doesn't matter so much how they are constructed, whether it's single-family or two-family or three-family or the guidance itself does define a multifamily unit. And it says that it's three units or more in a structure or on a parcel. So you could have like multiple multifamily homes. So multiple multifamily structures on a parcel. So if you think of the Housing Authority, so there are multiple structures. I think each one has eight units. So that, yeah, so it doesn't matter the configuration. That would be considered multifamily. And ownership doesn't matter. It could be condo. It could be rental. That's immaterial. So it doesn't matter to this zoning.
Okay, so all of those units, like the Housing Authority, they count towards the 750?
They would. So if the area that is chosen, and that's going to be, you know, a planning exercise that we go forward with CMRPC over the next year.
Okay.
So when, so what we have to do is we have to define an area. So it could include the Housing Authority land or it could not include it. It could include Avalon or it could not include it. So that still remains to be seen at this point.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, comments or questions from staff? All right. Well, great. Thank you, Nina and Jane, for coming tonight. Appreciate you walking through that. That was really helpful. And I think we have a copy of that presentation as well. So that's great, too, to take a closer look at. It's a lot of different numbers and information to digest, for sure.
Very good. Thank you for having us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Great. Next on our agenda, we have the discussion of proposed zoning amendments for 2022 Annual Town Meeting. So I'm going to pull up, and this order is listed by section. So I'm going to go by article, if that's okay with the board, just so we can all follow along. Laurie, I'm going to pull up, I think you sent us the most up-to-date today. Just going to pull that as a reference. And you sent us a new map as well, but the map should be in there already? The Article 37 zoning map?
Yes, so that was submitted to the town administrator's office. So they have a copy of that for the warrant.
Okay, all right. Will it be, I just guess I haven't scrolled down yet. Will it be printed as part of that or an attachment?
It will. So it'll actually be enclosed in the warrant booklet.
Okay, so not necessarily as an additional piece there. Okay. All right, great. Why, it looks like our first article in this warrant is Article 33. So I'm going to share my screen here. And for this evening, what we'll do is if there are any public comments related to any of the articles, we'll be happy to accept public comments this evening. So why don't we start with? And what we'll need to do, too, from the board perspective, is we'll need to also take a vote. I mean, obviously, this is in the warrant printed already. We'll take a vote of the Planning Board endorsement of it. And perhaps after the conversation, if there's time, we can, unless we go, if we decide who's going to cover each one at town meeting, we can probably squeeze that in tonight as well.
Just one, if I could just make one comment. There was one little deadline that was missed. So actually, tonight is not the official public hearing. The public hearing is going to be on the 19th. So this, I got approval from the town clerk and the Attorney General's Office that we could still accept public comments at this meeting. But I would respectfully request that you refrain on the vote until the 19th.
Oh, thank you for bringing that out. Yep, absolutely. That makes sense. Let's see. Okay, so board members, we will not vote this evening to that end. Let's see. Okay, can everybody see the signs by law here? All right, are there any additional comments from board members at this time? Okay. I can't, let me scroll through and make sure. Okay, are there any public comments at this time? Okay, hold on. My screen's a little different this time. Okay, I see hands raised. Let me get over, okay. I'm going to pull in Scott Rogers. Okay, Scott, just say your name and address.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Scott Rogers at 26 Tomahawk Drive. I guess let's start out and with the setup that Laurie gave. I guess to start out in, and with the, with the setup that Lori gave, that tonight, it sounds like you're then looking for input, and then we'll still have the formal public hearing on the 19th. Um, and, and do you think in terms of teeing these up in preparation for town meeting, do you think you'll be putting together the kind of intro information that you've done in the past, where you've, you've defined what the objective of the bylaw is, and the reason for the change?
Yes, um, that's a great point. I think that we, over the last couple of years, we've been doing that as a handout, but prior to COVID, we usually do that as a presentation. So in one form or another, we will be providing the overview, whether it's presentation. I, I doubt handout, Lori, are we doing handouts at this town meeting, do you know?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. I could, uh, certainly reach out to Linda and, uh, see what the desire is for this town meeting.
Okay, I, I think in the past, I, the presentation's fairly adequate. I think in the past, it was only because we didn't have a presentation out, and the last two meetings were outdoors. So Scott, to answer your question, in one form or another, there will be that context for people.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's good. I don't know if you'd have it in place for the, the 19th, but that would probably help, you know, everybody kind of form their, their, their comments and further input, you know, just knowing, you know, kind of what the purpose is of, of the change in, in, in the meantime. Um, and then, just, just for, for information, how many attendees in tonight's meeting?
Um, I don't know, it looks like eight here.
Okay, great, that, that's pretty good then. So then, in terms of, you know, these, these specific inputs tonight, I mean, what, what's your, what's your objective? Like, what, what do you wanna hear from the public? Cause we've got, you know, the warrant closed already. So any changes are gonna be motion amendments on the floor of town meeting. So I don't know to what extent you're looking to make changes and, and, and hear, um, possible changes, or if you're looking to be more explanatory to the public on why these, these changes are being proposed. Um, or if you're going, or if you want to hear from public on whether they support or oppose these, um, these amendments. So what's, what's kind of the structure, what's the goals and guidelines of this input tonight? And then the public hearing on the 19th?
Yep, so I think if you have any changes that you wanna, any comments or changes, then that is something you could certainly do tonight, you wouldn't have to do it twice. And I think next time, i- if we had, at the hearing, if we have the intent and more of a explanatory-type walkthrough, and you have additional comments, you could always call, you could comment then as well. So if, if right now you have things that you have recommended changes, I, I would suggest you just share them now, and then not wait, but you're welcome to wait if you choose.
Okay, great, and of course, you, you have the, the document that I sent in, uh, earlier as, as written comments.
Yes.
So I'm trying to get an idea of, you know, folks that might be watching now, or looking at a recording, to what extent to go into, uh, my written comments versus verbally now. Um, that's, that's what I'm kind of trying to gauge, uh, and what's important for the board, uh, at this point.
Okay, do you have any suggested changes for this particular bylaw?
So let's, let's start with the signs, uh, then. Yeah, so if we're gonna, if we, if the meeting here is, we're gonna go one by one and, and rotate through, then I'll focus on just, on this individual one. Um, I guess a question on this is, is that we're, you know, making the sign regulations more restrictive. Um, do we have an idea of, or has any analysis been performed on the businesses that would be affected?
Um, so I think for the primary case of this particular bylaw, they, some of it was cleanup, and Amy, if you wanna, you're welcome to comment as well. I, I'm ready. Uh, the areas that I think are of primary impact would be, when it comes to the illuminated signs, or the externally, the externally lit signs.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's the biggest piece of this, unless are you thinking of a different part of it, or is it primarily that component of it?
Yeah, primarily that, where we're, where, that, that was like the major, major change. There were some other changes on the edges, but yeah, that's probably the most important one. So there's an idea of which businesses have illumination currently?
Yeah, so no business that has it now will be forced to change it. So there's actually, so zero would be current, but for anyone coming in new, any net new would require that to conform to the bylaw. So if you currently have a sign in that district, you didn't, the day after town meeting, you don't have to take your sign down, or spend a lot of money, or change it. It would just be, it would be from that point.
Yeah, and so then with the, with the requirements, that if there's a certain level of repair or replacement needed, right? Then the signs would need to become conforming for that existing business, if I'm reading that correct?
That's correct, and in that case, you'd have to buy a new sign anyway, to, if you, if your sign was that damaged.
Yeah, and, and I can't remember, um, was there, was there a level of repair? I'm, I'm scrolling through my copy.
Amy, do you have that offhand?
Um, it's on here, but it was beyond repair. If the sign was a beyond repair, then it had to be replaced, there was no percentage.
Yeah, I think our discussion was with, with Bob, just how would he determine? We had 30% at one point, I think Bob said, how would I fairly determine that? So we took out the percentage at that point.
Okay, so, so if there was a sign that needed to be replaced, new sign permit would need to become, be, uh, replaced as a conforming sign to these new bylaws?
That's right.
Okay.
And truly, if I could, if I could add too.
I could just add, um, to answer your question, no analysis was done, and should have been done, but no analysis is done. Second, if the person changes any wording on their bylaw, that triggers, for a brand, any wording on their sign, triggers them to have to change to a new sign.
Which you'd have to do anyway, if you change your business name.
Right, but they could have just changed the panel. They can just change the panel on the front, and the wording can change.
Mm-hmm.
It does, it does affect, so if they were to change, I'm still talking, Amy.
I know, but I started before you, and then you jumped in, but.
So if the sign says a name on it, and they wanna add another name, or change a letter to it, that triggers from going from an internally lit sign, which at this time, you only have to change the front panel, to doing a whole new sign, all new lighting, everything on it. So it's not, it's not actually correct, what Carrie said. There is an impact if they change their name, or anything about the sign, other than if the sign is deteriorating and needs to be replaced.
Okay, Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, the bylaw added more words to it, but truthfully, before the words are added, any new sign was considered erection of a new sign, and any wording change was considered an erection of a new sign. So they all had to conform to any current bylaw even previously. So there really aren't as many changes to this bylaw as Michelle would lean on. Maybe the downtown is, was the major change, where the downtown, the internally illuminated signs are now being prohibited, similar to downtowns and all the other signing downtowns, has to do with the master plan, and trying to get conformity and revitalize the downtown. But it's, it's the one small area, and in the past, if we talk about conformity, anyone who changed a sign had to conform with the current bylaw. So a lot of those sections that were added were actually a positive too, cause it said that anybody who was there before is allowed to stay. There were other things added, saying that if you're a municipal, or if you're a historical sign, then you don't have to, you don't need a permit. There were a lot of different things added, but not all of them were, um, you know, negative, as you tried to say. There are actually some positives, and we're also defining internally illuminated and externally illuminated, cause there are a lot of questions about that.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, we have a whole bunch of questions. So Scott, um, we're at the tail end of yours, so I'm gonna, uh, thank you for your comments, and I'm gonna.
Well, toward, if I could just mention on this one, cause now I'm confused. So let me just make sure I understand correctly. If I'm a downtown business, where this proposed change would make my internally illuminated sign non-conforming, if I need to change my sign, if this, if these proposed changes are approved, I would need to get a completely new sign permit, and I would not be allowed to have an internally illuminated sign.
Right, you'd have to conform to the bylaw.
Right, so, so, and so we haven't identified all the businesses that would be impacted, but we know any business downtown with an internally lit sign would be impacted by these proposed changes if, and would have to get new signs, um, if they want, needed to change for whatever reason, lettering on their sign.
Right, but under the circumstances you're mentioning, whether their sign is destroyed, or they need to change the wording, you need a new sign. You, there's an impact either way. So we're making, we're looking at our downtown area, and we're thinking about the things that can start to improve the downtown area, and the look at, the look of our downtown area. And at some point, we need to put a stake in the ground for what we want it to look like, and how we're gonna conform to it. If we want the look we have until the end of time, then we never have to do this exercise. But if we want to make changes, we have to put a stake in the ground at some point. And when people get new signs, that is the result of trying to make change little by little. Um, for anyone who has a sign now, there is no impact the day after a town meeting. It, there's always gonna be a cost of new signage, and, um, you know, I, I think this board took a close look at doing the best we could to make that a good situation for everybody, the people who live here and the businesses that work here. So, uh, I'm gonna move along from, from this piece, and, and allow some others to speak, thank you. Okay. Lisa, if you would mind, your name and address? But, I can hear you, oh, I can hear you now.
Hi, Lisa Moselli, 13 Maple Street. Um, because we're only looking at a small section on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
It's what we're talking about, basically, the, the definitions that, that we've gone, is that what this one discussion is, is definitions?
Uh, no, you can speak to any piece of the bylaw that you'd like.
Okay, so, so one of the questions that I have is that in, um, is the signage that we're talking about, more the, uh, internally illuminated signs, um, i- is it my understanding that there's a concern that, um, we're gonna affect these so many businesses, and they're gonna, and they're gonna have a hardship? Is that, is that what the previous caller was trying to in, intimate?
Well, I can speak for that, but if that's your inter, that, if that's your interpretation, do, do you have something, if that is the case?
Well, I mean, I, I would be, I, I don't know, I find that, I find that quite a stretch. Because, um, you know, I mean, all, what we're, what I was under the impression was, we were just trying to tidy up a lot of things that, that we're trying to do with MPIC, and getting a, you know, a downtown appearance, and, uh, helping with economic development, and that sort of thing. And, and if I drive downtown, through downtown now, I see a lot of signs that have been, uh, the internally lit signs that have been up for so long, that they are no longer white, they're yellowed. Uh, many of the lights inside aren't even working anymore. There doesn't seem to be the desire to, um, replenish the appearance of these signs, but to keep them just as they are, because it would cause a hardship, I don't think that's the case. So, um, so I'm certainly in support of what we're trying to do, and I don't understand the, the, um, looking at it from a magnifying glass perspective. And, um, that's my remark, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
One thing, Carrie, if I, if I could.
Sure.
Um, just to speak to Michelle, back in 2014, we did the sign bylaw. She mentions that she talked to all the businesses, and there was data. I was part of that bylaw, and I never saw any data. Like, there's a lot of talk of, we have data, we had this, we had that, but if there was data back in 2014, as to talking to the businesses, I was on the board, and I was never made aware of any of that data, so I'm not sure if it's still out there. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Following to that, Amy, if she was part of the board, she would have been on the several meetings that we had, the business community. At this point in time, we had no meetings with the business community.
Yeah, no, they never came in when I was there. There was a lot of talk about real estate signs, but.
Yeah, they did, they did, we had a big meeting with the business community in the library, and for the next meeting, I can go back and share that with you.
Sure.
All right, okay, let's see, I have one, I have another handout. Um, Fran, if you just say your name and address?
And it's Fran Backstrand at 76 Cedar Hill Road, thank you, Carrie. Um, I just, I have just a couple of, you know, whys, that I would hope you don't have to answer me tonight, but if you think that they would be asked to get a town meeting, you may wanna be able to tell me why, um, certain things were done. But I first, I need to ask, cause what I printed off of the website was April 5th draft. It doesn't have numbered pages, so I know what you're looking at is different. Can I assume though, that, I mean, cause I might be saying something that is not longer relevant, because the, the town website had a April 5th draft?
Oh, um, Lori, I just took this from the last thing I received via email, is that the same?
Yeah, so there, there are two different documents. So today, what I emailed to everybody is the final warrant. Um, so I got that from Becca this morning. Um, so I just wanted to send that along, so that had all the various articles in it. Uh, to make it easier for this meeting, and I should have put it, page numbers on it, but I didn't, um, I prepared that document that at the, has a heading that says, "2022 Annual Town Meeting Proposed Zoning Related Warrant Articles, April 5th, 2022 Draft." So I think that, that is what Fran is referring to, and I emailed that to you. Uh, gosh, was it Friday, I think, of last week?
Should I switch over to that, if that's what the, that, that's what it sounds like the public has?
Um, yeah, you might want to. Uh, unfortunately, it's not gonna be helpful, and it doesn't have page numbers.
That's why it might be easier to just, to reference your pages. I mean, it's, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, I can ask my questions, just.
Yeah, if you wanna ask, I'm gonna take a look, get a free comment.
Okay, all right, so I will say that, um, I do have concerns about the, the explanation that would have to go along with, um, the cha, the, the non-conforming, um, and compliance of existing signs. Because, and I know that there was a lot of discussion about making it not too vague, but not make it too restrictive, because we don't want Bob becoming the sign police when he has other thing, responsibilities as well. But when something remains unaltered in any way, it, it can stay, as long as it's continued to be maintained. But if it becomes removed, or destroyed, or needs repair, it can't. So those things, I think, will confuse people, cause are we talking about like what Ms. Moselli was just talking about, which are just weathered and ill-repair, or are we talking about paint chips and missing letters? Um, the Z cleaners, I never know what he's advertising, because he's missing letters all the time. Um, but I do have concerns about why they're saying, um, no, um, canopies or awnings can have signage. I think of the tavern that has an awning with their sign, that also is a covering for outside dining, that makes a lot of sense. And even though they would be grandfathered, I wouldn't want to see another business not having that opportunity if we don't allow signage on an awning. Well, I think we have to, actually, we use a, use variants at the moment for that. But, um, the gasoline canopies are the same thing, and the gambrel and mansard roof. I, I, I just don't understand why we need to be that restrictive, but again, um, if in your discussion or presentation at town meeting, you may want to elaborate on that.
Can I just speak to that really quickly? We didn't change canopies or awnings, so whatever's there was what was there back in 2014.
The gasoline canopies have been added.
Oh, the gasoline, yes, but not anything on a restaurant, the canopies and awnings is the same.
Right, but they no longer have any, if, if your no-use variances go through, or no-sign variants are allowed, there would not be opportunity for exception, so.
Oh, you're talking about no-use variants?
I'm talking about if, in absence of a use variance or sign variances, there would be no exceptions to the awnings. And then I just have, just one, and this was more, it, I think there's, um, a contradiction, and it's on, I'm sorry, it's gonna be on the, it's on a section about electronic messaging, it's number 14, and it says, "In addition to the regulation..." And it says, in addition to the regulations in this section, section seven nine twenty D two shall apply. And when you go to our bylaw in that section, it refers to signs in certain business districts being allowed below canopies or on canopies and awnings. So, I don't know, I could have gotten lost in the minutia, but you may want to just double check to make sure that there's consistency there, if the intent is to not allow it.
Okay, could you, so I can't find exactly where you are.
No, stop right there. So, right there was the first thing that I said, um, number, scroll down a little.
Yep, three. Keep going. That would be out.
Number fourteen, keep going. Fourteen, fourteen, okay.
There it is.
There it is.
That's what I'm talking about right now. That references something in our town bylaw that says, in addition to all of this, you have to adhere to that. And that actually says that signs are allowed as long as, whenever possible, that they're integrated into buildings' architecture. Um, and they, single signs hung below canopies or small signs on canopies or awnings. So that, to Amy's point, I think that that's always been in conflict with this other piece, but if you're cleaning it up, you may want to do that.
Okay. Okay, so let's, thank you, Fran. Did you have other comments?
No, that was it.
Okay, so let's break this down. Um, I, we talked about this one and I thought this number fourteen was because we, there was, um, something that we thought, that, that was in the bylaws that we didn't always refer to because we, it wasn't always evident to us. And this was a way to bring it up so that we could, it was right in view that we needed to look at this section. Is that what?
Yep.
Is that, okay. But Fran thinks.
Existing, but it just isn't in that section.
Okay, so do we have the wrong section?
No. But what Fran's saying is that the wording in section seven oh nine oh two oh doesn't match what we have in the sign bylaw. I think that's what Fran was saying.
Okay.
And, and but those are already in place before any, like, we didn't make those changes. But what she's saying is while we're updating the bylaw, we should probably make them match.
Okay.
But that was in place before, you know, it was in place before our discussion. I was just trying to make sure that if you go to the sign bylaws, you actually will see that section on signs.
Okay, so, well, I see, I see, okay. And then for the awning and the, the canopy, so I, I just want to make sure we understand that one. So, the, the awning definition has always been in there. And the can, oh, the canopy that we're talking about is the gasoline canopy. But we do not believe it impacts a restaurant canopy. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, but then, um, I don't want to get Fran's statement wrong, but what she was saying, then she talked about the no-use variants. If there were no use variances, then no canopies would be allowed, whether on gasoline canopies or awnings or even though like an awning was always there, if we have no use variances for signs, then if an awning was allowed, it now wouldn't be allowed.
All right, Fran, I think you're still with us if you want to clarify.
Do, can you still hear me?
I can, yep.
Okay, all right, so, no, it's not in the definitions, in basic requirements, number three says, no sign shall be a part of a gasoline canopy or awning. And then when I was trying to figure out why we would say that, I saw that in the seven nine forty section, it says that you can have signs on an awning. So that, that's where I'm saying it's a conflict. And Amy's correct, it has always been there. In one section, it said you can have a sign on an awning. And on the other section, under basic requirements, you cannot have it. But now that you're pointing out the other section, it's becoming more confusing.
Okay, so is this conflicting? Or did we put the definition in because we referred to it and there was, it did not exist before?
I think she's talking about the awnings isn't, is conflicting because our bylaw here always said, you can't have signs on awnings, but if you go to seven oh two, seven oh nine oh two oh, it says you can put it on awnings. That's what she's saying and.
Okay, so this is all the same issue in two different spots.
Yeah.
I think she's also saying that, uh, number three under D also says, so if you look at the definition of awning, it says that it is a fixed. So, a permanent sign which is affixed to or consists of a permanent or retractable awning or marquee permanently mounted to the exterior surface of a building. And then, um, under three, it says that no sign shall be a ta, uh, part of or attached to an awning.
Okay.
But those were already there, so I think.
Okay, so let's figure out. All right, thank, was that it, Fran?
I'm sorry, yeah, that's fine for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, so then a, as a board, what component, do we need, so these are things that are already there. Do we want to? How do we want to address? Board thoughts on how we? Because we can't put in another, I, we, so now it's, it's what it's referring to that needs a correction. That's what. So even if, I mean, there's nothing, I don't think there's anything we can do about what's in there now because we can't, even an amendment wouldn't pull, but it'd be like pulling, it's a whole new bylaw. I mean. All right, any board thoughts on this one?
Just pulling out my book.
Yeah.
I, I think I'd want to look it over and then maybe we can talk about it on the nineteenth because we're still going to have the public hearing. You know, we can look at all three sections and then maybe come up with an idea for the nineteenth versus on the fly right now.
That is hard. I'm sorry, I'm putting you under pressure.
That's, that's okay, I just have my books out.
Okay.
But I'm looking at all three sections and I don't want people to sit around and wait.
Okay. Okay. All right, but other than that, um, any other board comments on this?
Um, I'm just curious, you might get some questions if people are really reading this. What constitutes an abandoned, uh, number six, right above that, um, basic requirement? What constitute, what actually constitutes an abandoned, uh, sign? What does that actually mean? And how do you determine that it's, when it's been abandoned?
What, am I on the right page?
Well, I would think an example would be on Route nine, there's a sign that calls for mini golf. And there is no mini golf anymore, the baseball field or on Route nine. So I would think that would be an abandoned sign. It's been there forever.
Right, so the bit, the business is no longer there, but the sign, I don't know, is that abandoned?
Lives forever. Oh, Bob, sorry, go ahead, Bob, I didn't see you down there.
Um, it, 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 thank you. If you read into, um, abandoned or damaged or obsolete signs, um, whether it's abandoned or obsolete, basically if the sign has no more commercial value, like Amy said, the, um, miniature golf place out on Route twenty, you know, or the JJ sign which is currently taped up. Um, you know, obviously if the business is, isn't there anymore, the sign is abandoned and it's also obsolete. Um, in that case, I, I've been ordering these people to remove them or cover them.
Okay.
Uh, just as a quick backup, the one on Route twenty, uh, Route nine, with the mini golf, it's actually on state property and the owners refuse to do anything about it. And it's kind of in a no man's land and I've spent way more hours than I care to admit to try to get the thing down. And I'm not about to s- send, send my BPW out there to take it down.
Yeah.
I mean, it's dangerous and it costs, going to cost a lot of money. It's just, you know what? It's in a no man, it's in no man's land.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yeah. It was, it was, it was put in a incorrect place at the beginning. So, but, so, so to answer your question about a abandoned sign is basically any sign that's no longer relevant to the property.
Okay. Okay. Any other thoughts on this one? Okay, I'm going to go in order here. Brew, this must be brewery, let's see, article thirty-four. So this piece is the, the addition of, um, several definitions and changes to the use table and, uh, parking. Amy, did you want to speak at all to just the intent of this one? I guess maybe that'll be helpful if we just state that here. Oops, are you still there, Amy?
Yep.
Okay.
The intent was just to add in the definitions for breweries, whether it's microbrewery or nano brewery and then add it to the use table.
Um, and I think what we did here, let's see. We have our use table. I think one other element of this was really just providing an alternate use in our industrial district. So, we've talked before about getting the same types of things there. We saw a few years ago that, uh, we did the outdoor, the, the, um, soccer field that went in last year or the year before, uh, just different uses out there, expanding on that. I think this accomplishes that as well. Any additional board thoughts or comments on this one? Oops, that's it, short. Okay, any, oh, go ahead.
I, I know that this might be a little bit late just looking at it, but would there be any harm to putting it in high, highway business or?
So, it is, oh, what is it, the brewery piece or which one, which?
Yeah.
Which one, the?
The brewery.
Me, we could, but it would have to be an amendment on town meeting floor.
I just wondered, I mean, again, I'm thinking some people may be asking that and it may be something we could do for next year too, but.
Yep, I think we were starting slow because
Yep.
The original comments we had were people concerned about traffic and, and breweries. And so I kind of started slow.
Yep.
And then we added more, so. But, but I, I don't even mind making an amendment on town meeting floor if somebody wants to add it into highway business. It's not really a huge deal.
Okay. Okay, any comments on this one? Okay, let's see. Scott, if you just repeat your name and address.
You, that, Scott Rogers, twenty-six Tomahawk. Just a couple kind of quick questions on this one. If we look at the use table, Carrie?
Yes.
Um, not, not necessarily a, a change, but it just made me think, you know, we're aligning the brew club, my blue club, the brew club, pub, to be with the, uh, restaurant with alcoholic beverages. I couldn't remember the reasons why we have a zoning board of appeals, a permit for restaurants with alcoholic beverages. Is there a reason? I just, I don't know what that is.
Uh, do you mean the rest, one and two here, the restaurant ones?
Yeah, yeah, so for serving alcoholic beverages, then we got to go, you know, we've got the BAs in there.
I know, this was existing already in the bylaw, so I don't know. Anyone have any history on that or idea where that? I don't know if we have any history on that. No, I'm sorry, if we don't, we're not sure on that.
Yeah, just, and it, and it makes, it makes sense to align the brew pub with the restaurant with alcoholic beverages. So it made, it made sense, it just made me think, oh, my BA on those. Uh, and then a second question was on the parking. Uh, our restaurant parking is one space for every four seats and I didn't know if you wanted to align the breweries to be same.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, for that.
Sure.
Well, we had a lot of talking going back and forth on it. And then, um, I thought I did align it, but maybe I sent the wrong one. It was a Friday when we had to get it into the, um, selectmen for Monday and it was before, um, Laurie was here and we were really trying to rush it all through. So maybe I sent the wrong one. I thought I sent the one that aligned to Fran. But, but truthfully, there were so many, I might have sent him the wrong one.
Well, Bob, we, we talked about, do, do you know, was it, I thought we talked about this with you a little bit, the three versus four. We had quite a discussion on it. I thought maybe when we had two at one point.
Yeah, we, we did.
We did have two at one point, so I feel like we actually did land on three.
Yep, we did because the seating in, uh, those places is often different than what would be in a restaurant, a full-service sit-down restaurant. And the, um, so the parking needs are different.
But, if I remember right, the, you know, you're talking about a nano brewery or a brew pub, you know, think, you know, um, uh, the Wings Place up on Route nine, um, in Shoesbury. You know, you, you're getting a bunch of people together, you know, a bunch of the guys on a Saturday afternoon. You're going to have four guys, you're going to have four parking spots. You know, same thing with a, with a, with a ladies' night out, you know, you're all going to meet for drinks after work. It's, you know, it's going to be, you know, one person per parking space. So, I think this one space per three seats was somewhat of a compromise um, to, to allow, you know, because, because like somebody said, if you go to a restaurant, you know, you tend to have more families, you have ten more, you know, groups as opposed to, you know, one-off people showing up.
Yep.
Oh, good, I didn't send the wrong one. I know we went back and forth so many times and then.
Yeah.
I really tried to pull it together and get them all like down to the.
Yeah, okay.
Great, thanks, also, yeah, thanks.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, other questions on this one or thoughts? All right. This is the enforcement bylaw and, um, Amy, any insight, any intent, um, context you want to give for this one?
Well, this is more like a belts and suspenders, like when we talked to town council. It wasn't, when we talked to, um, Mr. Frederico, it was more, this is the process he already uses today. And I just wanted to add it in because there were residents asking about enforcement and what the policy was and I noticed some other towns had the policy. So, I figured if we just added in our policy, then as a board, we know what the policy is and the residents know what the policy is and it's just more black and white. And, um, as town council, you said it's belts and suspenders.
Okay, um, other board comments here? Any public comments here? Okay. Scott, do you have a question on this one?
Yeah, but let me go, let Bob go first, if he had a staff question or comment.
Uh, no, but, um, Scott, I'm asking you on the chair and you have a, do you have time?
Oh, yeah, no problem then. Well, actually, my question is for, is for, uh, zoning enforcement officers. So, we went through a version of this where he did have some concerns that it contradicted town council aligned it. So now we're merely redundant, you know, the belts and suspenders means we have redundant language. I guess my question is, is, are, did the upper level, higher level regulations change enough that we run the risk of this becoming a contradiction to other regulations? If the overall building codes and regulations change? So that's a question for, for Bob.
So Bob, do you have any thoughts on if we're at risk of change in a different way than we'd be at risk?
I think, I, I, I think the intent in the belt and suspenders is reasonable. Uh, the only thing I have some discomfort with is if you look at the second to last line on that page, the building is about to shell within fourteen days, give, give notice and writing to the owner of the property and the, the, you know, notice of the violation. So, as I said before, most of the time I try to get, start with a phone call or a conversation. And, you know, it, so the violation exists. I set up a meeting or I go and visit or I give them a phone call, um, and give them a chance to correct his ways. You know, I think fourteen days is a little bit of a tight schedule. Um, because, you know, sometimes it takes fourteen days for them to actually understand what's going on and give them an opportunity to, you know, fix their situation before I, you know, send the, the. and give them an opportunity to, you know, fix their situation before I, you know, send the, the written notice out. So I would, my, my, just my recommendation is either strike the fourteen days or instead of the word shall, substitute it with may.
Okay, so I think the fourteen days may have come from the original, so what's crossed out was the original. So it looks like the original had fourteen days, so that was.
That's different, that's different. That's if I choose not to act on a zoning complaint.
Ah, okay.
Okay, that's, that's actually in the state code. Um, if I, if I get a request to enforce in writing um, and I choose not to do something about it, I have to give the complainant the notice that I'm refusing to act on a complaint within ten days.
Okay.
Okay, this is different where it says if, if, if it continues, then I have fourteen days to actually issue the, uh, the enforcement package.
Got it. Okay, Amy, something from you?
Um, yeah, originally it had said immediately, so we, we compromised, we took out immediate and town council mentioned fourteen days. And so I do think there should be some set days or else, you know, or else we're back to. I don't know, I do think there has to be some sort of time limit. And originally we decided on fourteen days, so to go back and change it now.
Yep.
It's kind of tricky because it did say immediate and, and a letter that town council had written out before about an enforcement, they wrote ten days. But this time he wrote, um, town council mentioned, why don't you do fourteen days? I do think some sort of time needs to be set. I mean, I would have even been okay with thirty days if we brought it up before today.
Yeah.
But I think it, it came down to it and instead of immediate, we all agreed on fourteen days.
Well, since you already have a bunch of, uh, on the floor amendments, what's one more, right?
I mean, I would change it to like twenty days or thirty days, but I, I don't think we should take it out altogether.
Right, yeah. All right, Scott, did you have other questions on this one?
Just that this makes me very nervous that this isn't fully supported by town staff.
Well, I don't think Bob says not fully supported by town staff. I think we're talking about the bylaws. Again, let's refrain from sweeping statements.
So, um, Carrie?
Yeah.
I think what the building inspector suggested was you could also change your language. So if you wanted to keep the fourteen days, you could change the language. So you do have options there, and that's what he's considering for an option.
But may puts it back to may or may not, you know, and then maybe something won't happen at all, like I think something should, should happen, so I think you need a shall, but I think it all comes down to the time.
Okay, hold on, I have another, Lisa, if you just restate your address.
Hi, Lisa, Missalia thirteen Maple Street. I think that, that you should at least stick with what you have and trying to change these things at the last minute doesn't serve a great purpose. There's problems that we have been experiencing lately over getting enforcement for the, the offender to comply with. And there's been a few good examples of that in recent days. I don't know why we're, we're going back and forth over a time limit that the attorney has already recommended, which is actually four, four days longer than he usually puts in. And the shell and the may, I think we should leave it alone and move on to the next bylaw. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, other comments on this one? All right, oops. There you go, okay. All right, so we will move along here. Okay, next we have the use variances. So what we talked about before was if we wanted to allow for a certain use in town, they would put the work into actually including it in our bylaws as a byright use. So that the legislative body had the opportunity to have a voice in that versus just a, a, a board of five having that, um, the ability to put uses where they may not have been intended to go. And I think we talked about a couple of different examples of where we didn't think it worked and then took a further pounds that have already started to do away with the use variance. I think one case the board talked about was, you know, as part of the master plan process, we keep hearing from outside experts that you're never able to really change your districts or get into that downtown zoning in the way that you want to for as long as there are use variances because you'll never achieve the zoning that you intend. And it was just sort of a pitfall that keeps being pointed out to us. So I think our goal is to try to change that. And this is the point of this would be to prohibit use variances. Is there any additional board discussion on this? Okay, are there public comments on this? Okay. John Wickstead, if you wouldn't mind stating your address.
Hi, this is John Wickstead, two Sterrup Brook Lane. You know, I think the, uh, the intent of this is to keep the zoning clean. I think, um, the bylaw exists in order to define sections of town in which certain activities can occur. And, um, you know, I think that protects property owners. In particular, you know, it protects the, the business owners who own, you know, industrial and business properties. But it also protects, you know, residential property owners from having, um, you know, use variances granted in, you know, areas where they may or may not be appropriate. I think this cleans everything up and makes it very obvious that, you know, if it's in the correct zoning area, then it can be allowed. And if it's not in the correct zoning area, it won't be allowed. And I think this goes a long way towards, you know, making the sort of rules very clear to everybody. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, Fran, if you just wouldn't mind stating your address again?
Twenty-six Cedar Hill Road. So I, I wish I could persuade you to withdraw this, um, but I know that, um, at least the majority of you would not. So I won't make my argument against it to you, but I will ask you to think about how, when you say that once before circumventing the legislative body or having it be in the hands of five appointed people versus the legislative body is, is just, I don't think it's a fair way of characterizing it. But I will say that there are exceptions to the rules and the use variance is a way in which a person or a business or a property owner can have something that matters a lot to them with little to no impact on its neighbors. And just a, as an example, I would tell you, in, in two thousand nineteen, there were twelve applications in front of the zoning board, only one use variance, and it was to have an indoor recreation facility in the industrial zone, which was not an allowed use. How did that harm anyone? How is it possible that allowing that use in the industrial zone was somehow an infringement on the rights of someone else? And so, again, I mean, I wish I could persuade you to, to rethink this because it is used sparingly. Sometimes use variances help develop bylaw changes in the future when it's realized that you have several bylaws, I mean, you have several use variances for one thing and all, and you realize that, oh, well, maybe it's something we should change our bylaws. And then just caution, the, um, without a use variance, if we want to see the redevelopment of White Cliffs, we're gonna be very limited because the majority of that property is in residential. And it would take another year to eighteen months to two years to change the zoning to allow us to develop it and then possibly miss the opportunity. But that's a little sneak peek of what I'm gonna say.
I know, I know.
Thank you again.
All right, thanks, Fran. Okay, I have.
The two thousand and nineteen, the indoor commercial use, that was quite right because we changed that bylaw. Was, is that the soccer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the soccer was, they, did they?
Go by right.
They did, they were by right. We put, we had a bylaw change that allowed it in the district.
I just didn't know if that was some other.
Hold on, actually, um, sorry, Fran, can I, I'm gonna. Are you still here, Fran?
Yeah.
Are, is it the soccer field that you referred to?
It was the CrossFit Force. It was an indoor recreation field that came before the zoning board for a variance.
Oh, okay, we weren't thinking of the same thing. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
I don't think they ever built it, right?
That was not the point that I was making.
Oh, I know, I'm just curious if I had the right one on Barefoot Road.
All right. Uh, Lisa, does if you reset your address?
Lisa, Missalia thirteen Maple Street. Um, I, again, think we need to keep this in and we can talk about it at town meeting, but there are times when use variances have been granted and they have affected the neighbors. Now, three twenty-nine West Main Street would be a great example. Fifty Southwest Cut Off would be another example. I don't think that, um, I don't think that it's as simple as what Ms. Baxter was trying to, trying to explain. So that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Um, Michael Bernswig, if you could just state your address, name and address? Oops, I'm just gonna unmute. I think you're still on mute, Michael. Oops, I don't know what's happened here. Let's see. I mean, I'm gonna promote you to panelist, um, so be prepared. You may be on video, but you can turn your video off.
Oh, he's on, off mute now.
Okay, Michael, can you just? Oh, no, we lost him.
Yep.
We don't want to be.
His connection.
Okay. All right, let's see. Oops, you are there, Michael. All right, can you hear us? You may have to try. Oops, there you go. I think we could hear you now. Yep. We can. No, you must be.
I think it's a connection.
Oops, there you are.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Nope.
Uh, how about?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you. You're just shifting. Can you hear us?
Great. Thank you. But, Jenkins Drive. Maybe you're.
Breaking up.
Oh, you keep cutting up a little bit.
Yes.
Do you wanna?
Yep.
Maybe you want to try off video? Sometimes video makes it a harder connection. Oops. All right, we may have lost you.
You know what?
Well, you could try, if you want to try and call in on a phone and we could still let you in, it would just, you'd be on your phone if you can hear me. Oh, okay, yep. Did you wanna, um, we can't really hear you, Michael, so I may, I'm gonna put you back as attendee. I see your hand up, but I can't really hear you. Do you want to try one more time? All right, I'm gonna switch over for a minute and then if you get a different connection, I'm gonna, I'll try one more time. So I'm just gonna take a different question and then come back to you. Let's see. There we go. I think I did that right. I hope so. I hope I didn't hang up on Michael. Do, do we have the option to have written in comments like some? We can, okay.
No.
Yep, all right, we'll try one more time. Okay, do you want to try one more time, Michael? Does that work? No.
How, how's that? Is that better?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great, yeah, so apologize for the technical issue there. Uh, Michael Bernswig, uh, Ford Jenkins Drive here in North Pro, Mass. And I appreciate your, uh, hearing me. Um, I, I just would like to add my voice to the conversation. I think this is, you know, really important for us to, uh, move forward with and, uh, you know, take everybody's feedback so that, uh, you know, we have all of the community input on, on this matter.
Okay, did you have something about this one at all or just a general statement?
Uh, just in general, just wanted to voice my support. I think it definitely makes sense.
Oh, okay, great. Well, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think we have one more question. Scott, do you have a question or comment on this one?
Yeah, just, um, yeah, I think Fran brought up a, a good point earlier that a lot of times, you know, the zoning change in the direction that you want to go might take several years to put together. So our case in point this year is the brewery definitions, right? So a use variance is a possible tool to use on the positive side when something is aligned with the master plan or your strategic goals. Use variance can accelerate those developments. So I'd hate, I'd hate to have you throw away a tool that can be put to good use.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, uh, the next one, I'm switching over my screen to the map because this is related to thirty-seven, Article thirty-seven. All right, so it's two different documents. I'm not sure if I toggle, if you can still see. Can you see the zoning bylaw on my screen or just the map? Okay. For, for board members, can you see zoning bylaw on my screen right now or?
I just see, yeah, thirty-seven South Street.
Okay, and now you can see the map?
Yep.
Yep. All right, great, so I can toggle between the two. All right, so any, now, this art, this map was something that, um, I think Laura, you said Jim helped to make a little cleaner for us. So, um, for board members, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this map earlier, but does anyone have any comments on this map? Does this look as we anticipated for this particular bylaw?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, so the intent of this one was to clean up. There was a case where, um, the zoning at a, at one time or another had split the land of this property. So it was in two different zones. So this is a correction of that to put the property, um, all placing it in the downtown business zoning district. And I think, um, we discussed that at length, and then when Lori came, she helped us with the map, so this just should be complete at this point. No, any additional board comments? Okay, any public comments? John Wickstead, just your address again.
Yeah, John Wickstead, two Sterrup Brook Lane, just, just to point out relative to the last, uh, comments about how difficult it is to change zoning. Apparently it doesn't seem that difficult to change zoning, so. Thank you very much.
All right. Zoning humor, okay. Any, um, any other comments on this one? All right, I'm gonna flip back to the thirty-eight. So this is related to, um, a change that was made in two thousand and eighteen and this just cleans up what would be conflicting in the bylaws otherwise if we didn't change this. It exists somewhere else. We had a little blurb for that that's, um, we can read at town meeting as well that I think helps put into light, but it's really just a cleanup for our bylaws. Any comments on this one? Board comments? Public comments? Oh, I think we have one. Oops. No. Oops, I think Scott. Are, are you, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, we just, yeah, we were clicking, uh, yes, Scott again at twenty-six Tomahawk. And, and I realized this is cleaning up our, our two thousand and eighteen work. Can you remind me the reason for the two thousand and eighteen and, and being more restrictive on two-family dwellings?
Um, no, I don't think it's more restrictive. It's just a, um, it's part of a special permit process, so it's no longer an exception. Because we do special permits for it, you can't just get a special permit on it. You need the site plan to go with it.
It was voted on at two thousand and eighteen town meeting, but I guess at the time it wasn't, Kathy didn't update this section, so she's the one who caught it this year and mentioned that this should be updated.
Yep, so that was, that was a staff submission for this one.
Okay, I've got a, um, an additional cop comment, but I don't think it's appropriate for an open meeting, so I'll follow up in the background with that. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions? I don't think so. Okay. The Article 39, Temporary Moratorium on Distribution and Transportation Uses. And I think this follows, this is still right before forty, which is a change in definition. And the reason I'm double checking is because they come a little hand in hand. Okay, so then we have floodplain. So for this one, um, the reason they come hand in hand is because the board here talked about the merits of a moratorium in terms of looking at what's been happening in our town, the applications that we've been seeing come through, um, what's happening in our industrial district, some of the traffic concerns we've had over time. And we discussed the merits of, are we at a point where we need to stop, take a time to look at what's going on for commerce, e-commerce trends? How can we tighten up our bylaws to better protect the town, to be better prepared for the applications that we're get, seem to be getting? Um, so number one was putting forward to the town to vote on having a temporary moratorium so we can take a 12-month period of time to evaluate, um, what you see listed down here, um, A through M, some different areas that we could look more closely at. Uh, I'm speaking to them side by side for a second, although we'll take comments that one at a time. Is the second part would be if the town talked about a moratorium and decided we did not want to do a moratorium, the board felt that we need some sort of change to our bylaws because what we have now is, is really presenting a lot of challenges for us, uh, on the planning side. So if the town was not comfortable with a moratorium, we wanted to put forward, um, an update to the definitions to the best of our ability, um, based on what we know today. So although I think as a majority of the board would hope for a moratorium to get more time to perhaps even better fine tune this bylaw, we didn't want to walk away from town meeting without the opportunity to make, um, some sort of changes. So in this case, we added, um, additional definitions to this particular use. Um, and the point is, we talked about the, in terms of the use table. Um, at this time, we don't know enough. We're still learning. Uh, we, we have them as no's right now because we don't have the information that we feel comfortable with, but we'd like to be able to at least start to build in some sort of distinction in the e-commerce uses that we're seeing. So I'm gonna go back to the moratorium because I want to take comments for each at a time, see if we can unpack that a little bit. Any comments from the board at this time about the moratorium? Okay, any comments from the public about the moratorium? Okay. Marianne, if you just wouldn't mind stating your address again?
It's Fran Baxter at 76 Cedar Hill Road. Um, just, uh, for clarification, in the purpose, you, it referred to numerous distribution cent, I'm sorry, distribution facilities slash warehouses, yet nowhere in the definitions do you actually say distribution facilities. So I didn't know whether you wanted to, like, say, I mean, so again, because there are definitions for warehouse, trucking, rail and freight terminal fulfillment center and package freight delivery facility, but nothing that really matches distribution facility. So I don't know whether, again, it might not matter, but from an enforcement standpoint, it might. So I just thought I would point that out. Thank you.
Hmm, thanks Fran. So, let's see. So what? I guess I'm not sure what else we would call it. Do we not have distribution listed here? Hold on, I'm gonna check my book for a second. So in the use table, we do call them distribution facilities. So I think that must be the frame of reference for us. And I know Town Council, um, helped craft this one, so I've not, I'm not sure a change is warranted there. So if anyone looks, you can see in the use table, there are distribution facilities.
That's where it came from.
Okay. Alright.
The definitions too, it's called distribution and transportation uses. So it was in there a couple of times, distribution.
Yeah, I think that. I'm gonna double check it.
Oh, distribution and transportation uses.
And then the secondary part is, we're supposed to perjure as a facility on the use table, which this use table has always been a little interesting, but. And then in our use table, we have warehouse and then distribution facility. So I, I think it's okay. I think it's okay. Unless other board members feel differently about that. Okay. Let's see, now we have another comment. Uh, Michael, if you just wouldn't mind stating your address again? I'm gonna unmute you, see if that works.
Hi there. Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh, Michael Bernsweig, Ford Jenkins Drive, uh, Northborough. Um, and yeah, I would agree, uh, you know, it seems like distribution and all of that is noted in that section, so it seems appropriate. Um, but just, just in general, I, I think, um, this is absolutely needed, you know, to take some time to put some, you know, thoughtful consideration into, um, all of the uses so that as the town is growing and as we're, you know, making some of these additional, um, developments and uses and looking into what's appropriate and not appropriate and all of that, that, that we have, you know, structure and, and guidelines so that as we're making decisions, um, you know, residents and, you know, everyone on the, uh, various town boards is on the same page and we have, uh, reasonable structure so everybody understands what's happening and, you know, the uses end up as, as they're intended. So I think this is, uh, excellent, you know, a, a good next step and will give us time, uh, to take all the appropriate comments and all of that. So, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we have Scott. If you just stay your address?
Yep, 26 Tomahawk Drive. Um, the, the board's been able to render decisions on the most recent applications. So I'm wondering why you need a moratorium. You've been able to use the existing bylaws, deny the applications that don't, you know, make sense, approve the applications that do. So I'm, I'm, I'm worried that you're halting all industrial development, uh, even once again in development that might be viewed as positive for the town and, you know, fit within whatever particular application makes, um, if that application makes sense. So I could understand if you had trouble rendering your decisions, that you need to pause and, and come up with new ground rules. But given the existing ground rules, you've made your decisions. I don't see why you need to have a moratorium.
Okay, alright, any other comments?
Yeah, and then, um, one last thing would be, um, that in terms of the makeup of the committee, um, you're, it's, it, it has less expertise on that committee than's on the planning board right now. And, and the board has authority and responsibility to make bylaw changes. So you might not need a separate committee, just, just, you know, continue to do what you're doing to review bylaws and make changes. And I think all of those, those elements between the board and the supporting town departments and staff, you have the expertise to make the changes that are needed. A separate committee is just gonna slow you down.
Okay, alright, great, thank you. So for board members, um, just in terms of why I think it's not, we're not have, I think there is trouble and, and I think we are feeling, well, I personally am. I can't speak for all board members. But when we get these applications, um, I can't imagine, I can't imagine we make it look easy. There's a lot of, um, you know, but if I think back to the applications we've had in industrial, those are significantly difficult for this board and, um, for the people who live here. And it's nice, not just about the board making decisions, it's about the residents experiencing what's happening. And I think that experience for all was very trying and difficult and I would say not easy at all for anybody. So I think the goal here is to, um, try to get ahead of it, get ahead of that curve and what's coming down the pipeline, like self-driving trucks, drones, all the things we haven't even dreamed of happening and needing to have supported somehow in our zoning. Um, we're just, we're so far behind it. I think the idea is let's actually get ahead of it. And I don't know if any board members, I don't mean to speak for anybody, but if you have other thoughts on that, feel free.
No, I think I agree with that, that having an idea of what the changes that are coming, uh, and the impact that they will have on the town, I think is, is doing due diligence to what we do, which is planning rather than reacting.
I think fiscally too, like, you know, we have very few parcels left. And, and I know when Sutton went through with their decision for their FedEx or whatever warehouse they did, they had thirty-six conditions on it. And I just think we need to look at some of the other surrounding towns and they're asking for significantly more, uh, mitigation and other things that I really think that we can look at as a committee and as a board. I just don't want to miss out on anything. I mean, we have very few parcels left.
That is true.
And we're selling it short.
Uh, okay, John Wickstead?
Hi, this is, uh, John Wickstead from Two Sturbrook Lane. Um, I would make just a couple of quick comments. Um, you know, historically, the town has done a poor job in mitigating the effect of the large warehouses that we have permitted thus far. And it's been a significant negative impact, um, you know, on the local residents, but also on the town as a whole. You know, I would point out, and Mr. Rogers will remember this from our multiple, you know, discussions on the Board of Selectment meetings, that we recently had a traffic study, you know, in front of the high school driveway, which showed that 12% of the vehicles crossing in front of the high school driveway are heavy vehicles. You know, we have 12% heavy truck traffic already. You know, we've been very reactionary about, uh, permitting the buildings that are up there and allowing the, the traffic and the trucking in the industrial area, you know, frankly, to get out of hand. And I think taking a pause on that and doing some strategic thinking about how we want Northborough to look over the next 20 years, you know, is worth, you know, a relatively short period of time here. You know, this is a 12-month moratorium to try and get a little bit ahead on the planning side for, you know, what's Northborough gonna look like in the next 20 years? You know, are we gonna be a cut through from 495 to 290? Are we gonna be a distribution center for all of the trucks that will go to our 600,000-plus square feet of warehouse? Um, are we gonna have a last mile facility in our town that's gonna be really convenient for all the residents of Berlin and Worcester and Southborough and really inconvenient for the residents in Northborough? Um, and I think we need to take some time to think about those issues and strategically plan. You know, we have new planning staff. You know, how do we mitigate these things so that Northborough can retain, you know, the quality of life for the residents that it's been for so long? You know, this was a small farm community 20 years ago. Twenty years from now, I'd hate to see it be a big, um, transportation hub. Thank you.
Um, okay, and then I have Carol. If you were to say your name and address? Oops. You're in mute still.
Hello. Hello. Can you hear? Okay, Carol Chion, 15 Brigham Street. Um, first of all, John said it eloquently. Um, I have longed to hope that someone would come along and take a pause and think exactly as he said, like 20 years from now. So I just wanted to say thanks for all you're doing and I totally agree on the moratorium. That's it.
Oh, great, thanks Carol.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Fran, I can't tell if you, um, Ted, I'm gonna put your hand down and then if you still, if you had a clear, okay, there we go. Alright, um, as part, the second part of this, as I explained, is really about if, if we wanted to, if the town decided to not do a moratorium, is there a second piece of it? And if, if the town voted on the moratorium, we would just pass on this and stick with the moratorium. So this is not, this is not intended for both to, uh, ultimately go to vote. Is there, are there any additional comments from the board on this? Okay, any public comments on this? Okay. Um, Leslie, if you just wouldn't mind stating your name and address? Oops. Might be muted. I wonder if I have any trouble tonight. I still can't hear you, Leslie. I'm clicking unmute.
Uh, so you, you can't actually unmute them. It just sends a message to them, asking them to unmute. So the user has to physically click, um, either accept the message or, uh, hit unmute themselves.
Okay, so I've just been asking them like 50 times in a row. Uh, let's see, Leslie, we can't hear you. Oops, there you go.
I didn't raise my hand though, so. I'm here avidly listening, but no, I, no, I did not raise my hand, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought maybe it went up by mistake. I don't, I just, uh, we just wanted to say hello, so sorry about that. Okay. Um, John Wickstead?
Just very, very briefly, I, I won't, um, you know, have any more sob stories for you. The, uh, the more specific this can be in the zoning bylaws, uh, this is super important for how specific this is because, you know, we have entire new classes of buildings and new classes of, um, industrial uses. Um, and frankly, you know, this is a large reflection on e-commerce and I, our zoning bylaw needs to be updated to really account for the very specific uses that these buildings now have. You know, if you look at our old zoning bylaw, everything is just about, you know, warehouses. It doesn't break it down into the various uses that the warehouses may have. And, you know, having a warehouse that has, you know, 10 or 15 vehicles moving in and out of there a month is not the same as having, um, you know, 1,500 little blue vans moving in and out of there every month. So I, I strongly support the, the board's effort at trying to be very specific about the uses that, um, distribution and transportation, uh, may incur. So thank you for your effort on this. It's super important.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Okay, let's see, Scott? Just your address, name and address?
Yep, Rogers again at 26 Tomahawk. So agreed that, that, you know, this is the type of things that the board can do to make adjustments, you know, to my point on the, on the previous item about the moratorium. Um, so, yeah, this kind of proves, proves my point in some way, you know, not to the extent that the other areas, but you all have access to the expertise to make changes to, uh, the bylaws as needed. And then I finally, I just want to say, thanks for taking the comments. You know, a lot, a lot of the details here was, this was the first opportunity to formally have public input. Um, so it's, it's unfortunate, these are locked into the publication, the warrants closed. But to the extent that there are changes that, uh, you're, you're willing to, to make to improve these and offer them as amended motions, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so at this point, we have, I think that's, oh, I'm sorry, Fred. I keep going to call us the Fred plane, Fred, the Flood Plain Overlay District. We have one more. I keep going to call us the Fred plane, Fred, the floodplain overlay district. We have one more. Fred, it sounded, did you want to speak to the intent of this one?
Um, well, I'm happy to, if you want. Um, it's pretty basic. We are, uh, mending the bylaw to make sure that it includes the proper language to allow the residents of Northborough to continue to have flood insurance for those properties that need it. Uh, the bylaw's been, uh, requested by the state who is working to oversee the floodplain regulations that are adopted by the Federal Emergency Management Act. So it's really not much to, to elaborate on it. There's not any tweaking of language that we can really do at this point. We have, uh, sent it for preliminary approval, which we did receive from the state floodplain coordinator. And town council has reviewed it, uh, to make sure that it's in concert with other communities that have adopted similar language, for the same reason. So, um, I'm happy to answer questions if there are some specific ones. I think some came up initially when it went to the, uh, selectmen's meeting for the warrant, uh, the first draft that they looked at. I believe those have been answered, but I'm happy to answer questions if people have particular ones. And, um, I can still follow up with the state floodplain coordinator, who has been very helpful in the drafting of this article.
Okay, any board questions on this one? Nope. Okay, any public comments on this one? Okay. All right, so we, I think that is officially the end of the bylaw. This is a long one. I'm just gonna double check. There's nothing at the very end. No, that is it. Okay, so to recap, do we want to, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen for a second. Get through now, maybe while we have a little extra time. Who wants to cover which one, obviously, we won't vote tonight, but just in terms of coverage for town meeting. And then, is there anything that we, that we heard tonight that we would like to change? I think one thing we were gonna do as an action item, we wanted to follow up on that, um, the signed bylaw, that one piece that was pointing to, um, an existing bylaw. I think that was something we're gonna take a look at, um, as a follow-up action item. Are there other items that, um, we heard this evening that would lend itself to possible proposed changes by the planning board? Okay. All right, so it looks like our one follow-up, um, coming out of this was that piece of the signed bylaw. And then, um, at this point, we have no further proposed changes. Um, however, we still have a public hearing, so that will be on the nineteenth. And we still have, for anybody who is, is watching on YouTube or didn't have the chance to call in and would like to make comments after seeing the presentation this evening, please do send comments in. Um, that's welcome as well. So we'll continue to, uh, read the comments that come in and, uh, expect to have a continued discussion on the nineteenth. Okay, let's see. Moving along, we have the consideration of minutes. So starting with three-one, we received, Amy, you had some changes to.
I did. I had a lot for three-one, not many for three-fifteen, but if you want, I can go through three-one.
Okay, did everyone have a chance to look at Amy's minutes for three-one?
Yes.
I did, I just had two changes, that's it.
Okay, um, is it easier then if we go on what Amy's already submitted and not go through each line by line? And then, I, I did have some suggestions too, but I think mine overlapped Amy's. And Michelle, you said you have a couple. So do you want to, um, talk through what you had? Do I'm gonna actually?
I'm gonna share a screen.
I'm okay, I'll just follow along with you guys.
Okay, um.
For me, I know Michelle and I went back and forth, but I think, Michelle, you joined during the executive session because you couldn't get on, but I don't, I don't care if you wanna say that you joined at the beginning, but we had.
I didn't go back and forth with you at all, Amy. I did, um, I joined the executive session, I lost power and came back on again.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to note that I was there at the meeting when it began. So, if you want to, if you want to post that, you can do whatever you want.
So, you mean, you were there at six o'clock when the public started. You're also there when the executive session, but we're not doing.
I was there at five-thirty with the executive session for about ten minutes, lost power and came back on at six o'clock.
Yep, and that.
Whatever you want to put that in the minutes, you can put that in the minutes.
Okay, well, it would be in the executive session minutes. Like, you joined at six o'clock for the public hearing.
Oh, so there's no distinction, yeah.
Which is what these minutes are.
Okay, so there's no distinction then. She just attended remotely, so we don't need any indication of time. We started at six, right? Or whatever, so it doesn't.
We started at five-thirty, we opened it. And then Millie voted to go into executive session. But, and Michelle wasn't there yet, so that's why Melanie asked what time did Michelle join.
Oh, okay, so that's not your note. So, Michelle, this is Melanie's question, I guess.
Yeah. And so when Millie took the, well, when you took the roll call, call, roll call vote to go into executive session, um, Michelle wasn't there yet. And it's not a big deal. It's, it's just that she was having technical difficulty and she joined us right in executive session at five-thirty. But that will be noted in the executive session minutes.
Okay, so, um, Melanie, hearing that, are you able to sort out what that looks like so that it matches what, with Michelle is saying as well, or?
Yeah, I'll set with it.
Okay. So, Michelle, are you comfortable with Melanie hearing what we just said and just sorting out what that looks like?
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Any other edits from you, Michelle?
Do you want me to go down all of mine or everybody read them? So, like, they were just like, like, Dario's name was spelled wrong. I had a bob. Do you want me to go through all of them, or? I added a couple sentences after a question by Ms. Poretsky, per Attorney Daneski's recommendation. Is there anywhere, Michelle, that you had to change?
Carol, you're on mute.
As you're scrolling down, Amy, does everyone in the board agree with Amy's changes?
Yeah, so far they seem fine.
Okay, good, okay. So if you want to just get into where it says, it's the paragraph where it says signs, just before consideration of minutes.
Right there? Or down further?
Down further.
Oh, one thing I had in my changes is, um, do we, don't we use GWAC for groundwater? Or do we use GAC? I just want to stay consistent with what we've used in the past. I can swear we've been using GWAC.
Yeah, I don't even remember. But when I get to this page, um, the application was a variance from the ZBA.
Oh, I, I saw that too as well. Okay, but go ahead. We can solve that later. I just happened to see it. All right. Go to the, you can go to this part Michelle was wanting to get to.
It's just a quick change. I just don't want to make a correction.
So down where we had signs.
All the way down.
Yeah, and see, I took your name out here, Michelle, it said.
That was a double.
Okay, right there. So, Amy, you added in, originally, um, the notation was revisions and additions were made to subsection into section B. You added in Ms. Gillespie. You should also add your name in, because I went back to the video. And both you and I had a list of changes to work on, so.
Okay. So, Ms. Gillespie.
Should be Ms. Gillespie and Mrs. Ms. Poretsky had a list of items to discuss.
I think I only added the one thing.
Well, when I went back, you said I have several things to change as well, so I remember the discussion being very long and we went over a lot of things, so.
Yep, we did. We went over, you had a whole list of things and we went over all of them.
So if you said Ms. Gillespie and Ms. Poretsky had additional items.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Anthony, did you have something?
I did not.
Oh, I thought I heard you, sorry.
Okay, and I only, I crossed out the things where there weren't revisions, because it said revisions, additions were made to these sections. And I double-checked, these three fourteen and these were discussed, but there were no revisions made to them. That's why I crossed those out.
That's a good catch.
And we adjourned at eleven o'clock.
And then Millie, did you have, Michelle, was that it for your?
That was my comment.
Okay, Millie, did you have amendments?
Um, I think they're on a different page prior to the bylaws, uh, about the Deveraux property. Okay, we'll go through that a little bit more quickly, that maybe, um, we talked about, it's, there's a paragraph that let me see, Ms. Deveraux provided, if you go down, I can see Ms. Deveraux provided, it looks like two paragraphs beyond that.
Yep. The next one, two paragraphs after that.
Yeah, so the next paragraph starts with, so what is the, the OQ do, what was that about?
I don't know.
I crossed it out on mine.
Okay, yeah, because I felt like that should be crossed out.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't, I didn't go back and watch the whole meeting again.
That was the only thing I didn't need understand.
Okay, okay.
That was it.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I did have some changes. Um, I'm trying to think of the most seamless way, because I had a bunch throughout. Let's see, so if you go back to the beginning, I guess I'll just try to time. All right, if you go to distribution here, okay. Oh, all right, he said there should be identification. I crossed that out because I didn't know what it meant.
Right.
So, for the boards, okay with that, that was, I picked out a similar thing. Currently warehouse, he was just, okay. Um, I changed, i-if there is a change with only the new definition that's proposed, I put it could create. Right now, it's listed as would, but he, he never says anything that official. I think it was a could create non-conforming uses. And, um, by using that term, you could inadvertently leave out, so it's, again, it was very, it wasn't like, he never says things that definitively. It was very much like, this could happen if you do that. So I just wanted to make that clear in the minutes. So that's why I just did things like you could inadvertently, or we talked about, you know, the unintended consequences. So I just use inadvertent for that.
Where?
Oh, sorry, um, you, you have it highlighted as blue. By using that term, you could, I added the words could inadvertently leave out other existing warehouses. That was around the conversation about non, um, unintended consequences.
My spell check. Okay.
Okay, um, going to the composition of the committee section. If you go down to, um, Attorney Daneski, his, his names actually has the red underline. Said that if, uh, I added moratorium bylaw because it was specific to, he was talking specifically about this one. specifies how a committee is to be composed, that's what will govern. And then I added that, uh, he did say to us that we had the, the authority to create the committee by way of the bylaw. So I just, I, I didn't say it like that. I said, and I don't care how you put it, I wanted to get in there that I put in that's what will govern and the board has the authority to create the committee by way of the bylaw. And then you could just take out the capital N and just take out, um, yeah, and take out the period. I just did it that way. Um, otherwise, if you make it two sentences, I would just clarify that it was, um, his opinion. So it's not like dictated, the board has that authority, but that, I think it works like that and our board members disagree. Um, then the, the people would be a policy decision. I, I put the members appointed. I just thought that was clear, the people.
Yep.
And then, um, let's see. All right, then if you go down to um, the recap for breweries. Okay, so you have some changes here. Oh, you fixed already what I had. I just flagged like a sentence that wasn't a full sentence, so I fixed it, but you already fixed it in a way that's fine. Coming back to town meeting, you fix that too. And then, um, you fix that whole section, so that's fine.
I just took out this whole section because it was a big, long discussion on how we came to January first, twenty-twenty-three. You know, and I just wrote that we decided the planning board should report back by January first, twenty-twenty-three. Because it seemed like it was going in, you know, just didn't seem needed there.
All right, and then if you go to, um, the hearing for two-hundred.
Okay.
Um, I changed the Damar, Dario's last name, you fixed. Steph, all right, ZBA you fixed. I saw that for, the variance would be from the ZBA. So I can swear we've been calling it GWAC, but I guess if it doesn't, it doesn't really matter. I just changed that in mine, but I can't recall.
It might be too. I can't remember either.
Okay, um, whoops. The, um, if you scroll down to the next paragraph. Okay, sorry, um, but has nothing to do with this application, like in a sidebar. I just cross that out. But just in general, I don't, the parentheses imply like an editorial comment and I, I don't think they go in the minute. So either we're saying as a board, Larry Automotive is on the property, but has nothing to this application. Maybe that's something she said. I don't know, I just want, so, up, up, sorry, above veto. Yep. Okay, so with that, Ms. Deveraux is the first, um, word in that sentence, provided a thorough narrative. And the second to last has the parentheses. It's like an editorial sidebar and I don't, either it needs to be taken out of the parentheses if we agree that was said or just crossed off. I just crossed it off in mine.
It's up to everybody else. I don't, it doesn't matter.
I mean, we can leave it. It's just taking it out of the parentheses.
Yeah, see, there you leave it and just take off the parentheses, because it seems like an odd statement within, without that.
Right.
Okay, so should I just take the parentheses off or take it out? I don't care either way.
I, I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it doesn't, I think it's fine to cross out. It doesn't really say much. It's just noting it's on the property, whether it has to do with the application or not.
Yeah, I think then we can just strike it.
Okay, um, Rick Gates, that, starting, if you go down, um, Rick Gates. Oh, that's the Q, OQ, question mark. I crossed that out of mine. Um, the, if you keep going. Um, the, if you keep going. Right above Ms. Milton. Oh, you already corrected it. Dario's name again. You got Michelle's name in there. Um. Stop, oh, stop for a second. I, I just took out the, the, Ms. Gillespie's paragraph asked if they're, they had been before design review. Um. Let's see, there were no space, put snow with some of the trailers are not, or put in front of the trailers will be parked for the winter. Plenty of room, it was shown on the plan. It was just very, I just took out. Plenty of room and put that will be parked for the winter as shown on the plan. There's just sort of like a weird grammatically, it's kind of.
In the winter.
That will be parked for the winter as shown in the plan.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Okay, if you go down to Ms. Paretzky asked if they ever brought back used, so keep going down. Okay. He did not believe there was any other special permit from the. Let's see, what is in there now? Okay, he did not believe there's any other special permit from the GAC required. I don't, I don't know what Fred said. I assume this is about the special permit. There'd be no special, oh, a groundwater special permit perhaps is what this was? He did not say there's any other groundwater, but it sounds like they're saying a special permit granted from. GAC, but really I think what we were saying is any other groundwater special permit. So maybe we just flip that order. Does it seem like a better distinction?
Mm hmm.
Okay, that's all I have. I think you caught the other, the one, the, the other thing I flagged was just the sign thing, but we just corrected that, the additional. Um, edits one, so that's, that's all I had.
Okay.
All right, any other amendments for the bylaws?
For the minutes?
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Come on, night. I'll send this nominee.
Okay, any, uh, is there a motion to accept the March first minutes as amended? I make a motion to accept the March first minutes as amended. Second. Is there support? Okay, all in favor? Uh, Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, the March fifteenth minutes.
Do you want me to share or do you want to share yours? Did you have a lot?
Um, I'm just scrolling through. Uh, no, I didn't actually have too many. Do you want to pull yours up?
Sure, I didn't have many either. Did it come up?
Let's see.
Yeah. Do you see them?
Yep, yep. So some of the, so Laurie, it looks like you had some minute edits to this one.
Uh, yes, I reviewed them and uh, suggested some changes.
Okay, so those are reflected in here as well. Um. Amy, did you have?
Yeah, I just added the staff roll call vote. And then. We talked about the zoning bylaws and this is where um, we had received Attorney Dinesky's email. With reply from the board's questions and you pulled them up on the screen for discussion. And then I just added a revision to add the words zoning Board of Appeals was added to be for the enforcement to match the sentence and see. And that was all I had. In the minutes, it said, Ms. Michelle. Ms. Gillespie voted no on the signed by law. It made it sound like we voted that night.
Yes, yes, I caught that too.
But I think Ms. Gillespie may be stated that she voted no on the sign by law, the use variance in the distribution.
That's right. I had that flagged in mind. There was no vote taken at this meeting. So. I think, Michelle, would you agree that you had stated that? I think I had asked. See, we didn't vote on it. Do you remember, Michelle?
I think you were asking people where they stood and if they were in agreement with it.
Hmm.
So why don't you just?
Should I just take the sentence out? Because no one else, it doesn't talk about anybody else voting.
Well, we didn't actually vote.
No.
So do you think you just?
Going through and asking people, are, what do they think of this? Are they in favor of this? Do we need to make changes? I think that's where the discussion started from. I really don't think it's worth wasting twenty minutes to discuss.
So do you want me to take the sentence out? Since it's your sentence, Michelle.
Again, that's what I, what I said. That's how, that's why it's in there because it was a discussion.
No, it was written.
At that time.
It was written as a vote, so that's.
Easier just to take it out.
Okay.
And be more clear and concise because there's been a lot of confusion on votes. What was the, what's your last and final article? So this just.
Makes it. Yeah, that, that might make it clearer. Okay.
Um, that was, that was it for me. Then the rest were Laurie's.
Okay, um, I wanted to, let's see, let me look at mine. So the rest, Laurie had some suggested edits in there. I think that's fine. That, any. The board got a chance to see all that.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Okay, I have, um, let's see, going through mine, I think you caught that Michelle one. I also have a clarification under the chair. Asked for public comment. And then I wanted to note, um, my comments in this section.
Sure. Do you want to pull yours up or do you want me to type it in like, or do you want to pull yours up and then?
Oh, yeah, sure. Did you have anything that you changed? Because I already cut out, um, I, we just have the same edit right now, so.
I, I changed these little things, but I can just send it to you.
Sure. Okay, so then let me get mine. I'll pull mine out.
Carrie?
Yes.
Can I ask that when you make the corrections that if you're going to send them to me to fix, I just want one copy. I don't want multiples. Like I don't want one, and rather not have one from you as well. I'd rather have them all made in one document.
Okay, um, so I'm sorry, I thought I was under the impression that was happening. I didn't realize it was not, so, um, we will, is it not, is that not happening?
No, I was gonna send it to you.
Right now.
Oh, okay, Amy mentioned she's sending it to me and I'm going to send it to you, so you have it all in one spot.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, good. All right, so let's see. So Amy, you're going to send it to me. I'm going to incorporate changes in there. So I do have, um, for mine, let's see, that's the first, that's the fifteenth. Okay, so I wanted to add my comment here. I, this is the same, we have the same one here. Um, Ms. Martinak noted that he had been present at the last several meetings where a public comment was allowed and invited him to comment. Once again, he stated he would wait for the public hearing. Just to further clarify that conversation that occurred. And that was my only edit.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the March fifteenth minutes?
Can you just bring that back up?
Oh, yeah, sure. Hold on. There you go. How's that? Oops, I can't hear.
No, I, I understand now what you're, I, I just. I understand it now.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to accept the minutes for March fifteenth as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Millie? Oops, Millie, I'm mute.
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, we have an A and R tonight. Oh, actually, wait, Master Plan of Invitation Committee, the next meeting is April twenty-first. Um, next we have an A and R for two fifty-five West Street. Laurie, is this something you wanted to present?
Sure.
Great.
Uh, so essentially this is. One large parcel. They are interested in creating a second parcel of forty thousand square feet.
Oh, wait, are you, um, are you gonna, do you want us to pull up the, um?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I didn't have it queued up. Um, do you have an avid hand, do you?
Sure, um, let's see. I think Michelle actually sent this. There we go. All right, one second, I'm going to share my screen. All right, right here? Does this look like what you're looking at?
That is the one. So this is on West Street. It is located within the Residence B District. Uh, the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet. The minimum frontage is a hundred and fifty feet. Uh, so this A and R, the lot one is the new lot. And it does comply with the zoning requirements, the minimum dimensional and frontage requirements. So I do not see a problem with uh, the endorsement of this plan.
Any board questions? All right, is there a motion to accept the A and R, endorse the A and R for two fifty-five West Street?
I make a motion to accept the A and R for two fifty-five West Street.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Um, okay, any subcommittee update? Oh, some committee updates. We have, um, Millie, did you want to speak to the North Borough, the um, historical? The draft planner, I, Norm had sent it over and asked if the planning board would be interested in reviewing it. Um, I was going to send it to the board. Norm said it, wouldn't it be an emergency we could do after a town meeting, but. Um, I think it'd be great for the board to look at if we want to take time to do that. Any, Millie, did you want to say anything about that or? Did everybody happen to get a copy of it or is that something that, that they might want or, I mean, I wasn't really prepared to do that, but I certainly. Oh, no, no, you don't have to walk through it. Just in terms of, um, my goal was just tonight, ask if the board wanted a chance to review it and then provide any feedback. So you don't have to present anything. I just didn't know if you wanted to. Say how thrilled you are to have it done. It is pretty amazing. I know that Norm has worked incredibly hard on it, um, and done a fantastic job. So I think that'll be something that, uh. Will serve great use for many, many years. Is that something the board would like to, um, obviously look at through now until after town meeting and then get back with Norm?
Sure. It's up to you.
Yeah, I think I did actually see it. I think it's amazing. It's, um, has a lot of great information, a lot of great pictures, a lot of, you really put a lot of work into it. Um, I think we, I think it's worth looking at if the board feels that way as well.
Sounds good.
It aligns very well with the master plan. I think that's a, a really nice, um, tie-in as well. It's, it's really nicely done. It really is.
Has it been shared with the board?
No, we just sent it over. Yeah, absolutely. I'll, I'll send it over to everybody. Um, it's, it's long, so it'll take some time to get through, but it's worth. Yeah, what we can do. Yes, it's a good weekend read.
Mm hmm.
Um, any other subcommittee updates? Okay, um, we have our next planned, we're meeting over hearing on the nineteenth. Laurie, we have a couple other things going on on the nineteenth. Do you just want to give us a preview what we have for hearings on the nineteenth?
Um, oh my goodness, I, I wasn't prepared to discuss, so I don't have the, uh, the addresses off the top of my head. Um, but we will have, um, three public hearings. So of course there's the zoning article, public hearing. Um, we have a public hearing. It's an application. Um, actually, I was talking, oh, Brad.
I can help.
In front of you.
I can help, um, eighty-seven Hudson Street is that duplex? And also, um, I believe that, um.
Two hundred must be coming back.
Two hundred Bartlett Street will be back there. Both of those are going to the groundwater committee next week. And I'm finishing my reviews for them and I expect that they will have recommendations for you on both of those.
Great, okay. Um, we have our May third, ZBA has the twenty-fourth. So Laurie, anything at the ZBA meeting that the planning board? Should, well, I think, I think we talked before about, we usually do a technical review if there's a. If there's something on the ZBA side, is there anything?
Yeah, that, the next meeting isn't going to be held until May. Um, so I'm not clear what will be on the agenda as of this day because it's so far in the future.
Okay, um, and then obviously we have, it sounds like annual town meeting will be April twenty-fifth, so we're back to, uh, weeknight and it sounds like back to indoors as well, so. That'll be exciting. Um, one thing, just for a point of clarification or, um. We made a motion, Laurie, to reappoint Tom. And in thinking about it, I don't think we put his term. We didn't state like. Is it implied that it's just a renewal of a current term? I think in the past we've used dates. Do you think we need to reconsider the motion to make it again or we're covered?
Um, I think you're probably covered. There's probably a, a standard term.
Yeah, okay.
Folks, folks do. And so if you were, reappoint them, then I imagine, uh, it's understood that it's for the standard term length.
Okay, all right, so that's good. I didn't know if we had to specify his date or anything. It sounds like not. Okay, if no further business, is there a motion to close?
Uh, well, Bob had his hand up a second ago.
Sorry, I can't see everybody, Bob. Bob, did you have something?
Um, thanks, um, the town meeting is Monday night. Uh, the twenty-fifth. Um. Be ready to come back the night after.
You think? A double header?
This is going to be a long one.
Can we, well, we're, we're probably just going to be a night too anyway. Can the planning board just show up on Tuesday?
I think it's going to be a long, long, long meeting. There's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
So.
That's for sure.
Just keep your schedules clear.
All right.
Thank you for the heads up, Bob.
All right, so motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay.